Good evening. This is the 34th meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council now called Order. Asking if you have cell phones, please put them on vibrate or turn them off. Tonight's invocation will be led by Pastor Bob Washington of Celebration Church. If everyone would please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Praise God, let's look to the Lord. Dear Lord, according to the Scriptures, it is our understanding that it is your will that those you have called to reside or serve the city of Baltimore in any capacity seek the peace and prosperity of the city. And so following the 7th day of May 2018, we come before you and ask that you would indeed bless the city of Baltimore with your peace and your prosperity. We also pray that you, that your perfect will be accomplished in the life of every man, woman, boy, and girl who calls Baltimore City home, and every person who serves, works, conducts, business, vacation, play, and travel through the city. Thank you, Father, for the Baltimore City Council members' resolve to invoke your presence and blessing and seek your perfect will and wisdom over its affairs for this evening and throughout the years they pass legislation to govern the city. We also ask that you would bless and meet the personal needs of each member and staff of the Baltimore City Council and their family as they give of themselves to serve the people of Baltimore City. We also pray that you would bless the mayor of the city, Mayor Pew, her staff, and all those who serve in the executive branch, and we pray for those who serve in the judicial branch of government in the city and those serving in the many places of worship, nonprofit organizations, and community associations and groups. We pray that for such a time as this, that you would raise up Baltimore to be a light on a hill, a model city for the country that ranks high in providing a great quality of life for its citizens, particularly in the neighborhoods that do not have this current experience. We pray that everyone residing, working, and serving in the city will experience a safe, secure, and cleanly environment in their neighborhoods. We pray that you would help us to work together to make this happen. We also pray for wisdom and strategies to help the city be crime and drug-free and serve as a model for revitalized neighborhoods and community engagement between the community and police department. We pray that the current state of shootings and murders will stop and that you would heal the hurt and the pain of those who have lost loved ones from these evil acts. We pray your peace would rule in the hearts of those who are engaged in conflict, that they might pursue your peace and be peacemakers in the city. We pray that you would give your wisdom and strategy to those working in the private, public, and nonprofit sectors in Baltimore to create new jobs for the residents of the city. We also pray that consideration will be given to the youth and those with prior criminal records, whose lives have been transformed, so that they are, along with their family, can have a path forward and be part of the progress of Baltimore City. We pray that you would show us how to make Baltimore City a model for meeting the educational, developmental, and recreational needs of every child that calls Baltimore home. We pray that the public school system, religious schools, and private schools will serve the families of this city with an excellent education and environment that fosters learning and prepares them for their future. We pray that the services and programs established for our seniors and the homeless population of Baltimore will not be neglected and that you would guide us in effectively caring for those who are most vulnerable. We pray that our seniors will be honored and that the men, women, boys, and girls who are homeless and hungry will be cared for and provided a decent place to call home. Father, we pray that you would redeem the arts and culture of Baltimore City for your glory. We pray that people from around the world will seek to spend time in Baltimore because of the quality of the arts and culture. We pray that Baltimore City will be marked by its love for you, its concern for its citizens, including immigrants and their family, and those who visit us from around the world. We pray that your powerful hand of protection will be encamped around every public servant serving the city and every U.S. soldier from this city serving in the military. Bless their families as well. Father, we thank you for allowing us to pray with the assurance that you are pleased when we seek first your kingdom and your guidance for doing the work you have called us to. It's in the mighty name of God, the Father, and our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, that we humbly submit this prayer to you. Let's all say amen. Amen.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pastor Washington. We will now, the clerk will call the roll of the members.
President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark. Mr. President, we have a call.
Thank you. Today, this evening, we welcome Ms. Kim Trueheart of the Liberty Village Project, who will tell us all the wonderful things that she's doing.
It is strange being on this side. Okay. Good evening, Baltimore. I am thankful that I'm, I'm given this opportunity to talk to you about a very exciting initiative that we have in partnership with the Liberty Elementary School. It's called the Liberty Village Project, and it's called that because I truly believe it takes a village to raise a child. So what does the Liberty Village Project do in partnership with the principal at Liberty? Just about everything that that principal can't do. I think it is our cause to try to bring in those resources that the school's budget cannot sustain. And so how do we do that? We do that through partnerships. And I'm proud to say I see Dr. Perman here this evening. I have a partnership with the University of Maryland School of Psychiatry, which is piloting a peer-to-peer coaching initiative for parents. So every Wednesday evening, I buy dinner for the parents at Liberty to discuss traumatic events in their lives, and we help them navigate those events on a weekly basis. We feed the children, we provide daycare for them on these evenings that they come and participate with us. We also have partnerships with organizations like the Teachers Democracy Project, which is helping to strengthen the parent-teacher organization at Liberty, giving them training, giving them coaches, giving them skills, so that they can do a great and fantastic job in supporting the children. I also have partnerships with organizations like I Am Mentality, which is a young men's mentoring program. Crayons and Culture is another organization that we work with to provide reading and literacy programs after school to our children. I'm very thankful to say that in October, we were awarded a grant from the mayor's office of Human Services to provide an out-of-school time program at Liberty. That program runs from 3:30 to 5:30 every afternoon, and we engage our children, we feed them a healthy meal and a snack before they go home, because I hope, if you don't know, some of our children don't get a dinner meal at home. And so if we can provide that for them, that's what we do. One of the other things that I'm proud of is we have a food pantry, and that food pantry distributes about 16,000 pounds of food a month. 16,000 pounds of food a month. We have lines of people every other Thursday who come and receive the benefit of this food. Our communities are poor. Ninety-five percent of the students live below the poverty level. We need to support, help them, serve them in any and every way imaginable, and I hope you will help me, you will join me. We have a website, www.libertylearns.com. You can make a donation to us. We take not just monetary donations, but we accept all kinds of materials that will help our children and our families. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Trueheart. Do you have any information with the website on it, could you get that to us?
I will.
So we can disseminate that to all the council members. And thank you for the job that you're doing, not only with the school, but with the Liberty Rec Tech Center as well. All right. Okay. Hope you'll be a part of what we're trying to plan. Lester can tell you more about it. Getting with Mr. Coy and the Rec Centers and trying to pull together something that can be in all of our Rec Centers with the Rec Tech type stuff. So again, thank you. And thank you, Dr. Perman, for partnering with our schools. I know that you do a lot with our schools, especially in West Baltimore. Want to thank you and your team for the great job that you do day in and day out. And I want to recognize Delegate Antonio Hayes, who have joined us today, and also Also Kevin Parsons, who is no stranger here, but he's back home as well. He worked in these halls in City Council for a long time. So welcome to both of you. All right, this is the council's custom journalized invocation. Ask for motion of journalized prayer. Motion by Councilman Henry, second by Councilman Bullock. All of the favor of journalized invocation, say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, the motion is adopted. We will now proceed with the adoption of the journal.
Mr. President, the Journal of the Proceedings from the April 30 of City Council Meeting is on council members' desks.
There are motions to approve the journal. Motion by Councilman Scott, second by Councilman Dorsey. All of the favor adopting the journal, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried, the journal is adopted. Bill signed by the mayor can be found on pages two to three of the agenda. Bill to be introduced.
City Council Bill 18 dash 0233, Ordinance of Estimates for the Fiscal Year Ending June 30 of 2019, for the purpose of providing the appropriations estimated to be needed by each agency of the city of Baltimore for operating programs and capital projects during the fiscal 2019 year, sponsors City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriation Committee.
City Council Bill 18 dash 0234, Annual Property Tax Fiscal Year 2019, for the purpose of providing a tax for the use of the mayor and City Council of Baltimore for the period July 1, 2018 through June 30 of 2019, providing for estimated billings pursuant to state law and setting a semi-annual payment service charge for that period. Sponsors, City Council President on behalf of the administration.
This has been assigned to the Budget and Appropriation Committee. Resolution to introduce.
City Council Resolution 18 dash 0083R, Recognizing May as Lupus Awareness Month. For the purpose of recognizing May as Lupus Awareness Month, sponsors President Young, Henry, Scott, Pinkett, Bullock, Cohen, Middleton, Stokes, Dorsey, Burnett, Snead, Clark, Reisinger.
Chair recognizes Councilwoman Middleton. I mean Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, President Young. I'd like to suspend the rules for immediate adoption.
Second by Councilman Costello. All those in favor of suspending rules for immediate adoption of this resolution, say aye. Those opposed, nay. Chair recognizes Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, President Young. Move for, move the resolution for immediate adoption.
All those in favor of adopting the Resolution 18 dash 0083R, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried, and this resolution is adopted. This resolution was being introduced at the request of a citizen who felt very strongly that May should be recognized as Lupus Awareness Month, and I concur with that, and I want to thank all of the co-sponsors for this resolution. So I have to sign it. Okay. Oh, Councilman, please note Councilman Schleifer is a co-sponsor. Thank you. I would like to move, I would like to recognize Councilwoman Clark. I was going to move for your suspension of rules.
Thank you. I would like to move to suspend the rules to make an introduction from the floor.
Second by Councilman Henry. All of the favor of suspending rules to allow for introduction of this City Council Resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried, the rules are suspended, and the resolution can be introduced, and will be City Council Resolution 18 dash 0084R. The clerk will read the resolution into the record.
City Council Resolution 18 dash 0084R, Ray Antoine Glasgow III, for the purpose of celebrating the too-short life of Ray Antoine Glasgow III, offering the City Council's condolences and sympathies to his heartbroken family, friends, and classmates, and expressing outrage over the senseless murder of Ray Antoine Glasgow III. Sponsors, Clark.
Please note Council President Young as a co-sponsor. Councilman Stokes, Councilman Bullock, Councilman Burnett, Councilman Reisinger, Councilwoman Snead, Councilwoman, Council Vice President Middleton, Councilman Schleifer. All council members, is that okay? All right. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. This young man, Ray Glasgow III, until Saturday was a rising star across all of Baltimore, most specifically at Baltimore City College, where he was recognized as an outstanding athlete in football originally, and then practically taught himself lacrosse, and then became almost a coach and certainly the captain of that team in record time. He's helped his dad in his dad's painting business, when he wasn't practicing, when he wasn't studying. He was an excellent scholar. He was 17 years old. Now, for no reason that anyone can imagine, this outstanding young man is gone from our midst and from Baltimore's future with a single shot, for reasons unknown, as usual. This is a resolution to at least honor the family in its grief, the City College family, all the friends, the coaches, the teachers, the families, the neighbors, who are so proud of this young man, and so heartbroken to see him just gone. So, Mr. President, with your permission, I'd like to move immediate adoption of this resolution so that it can be taken to the family itself.
Councilman Henry, you second suspended rules for immediate adoption of this resolution. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried, the rules are suspended.
Move the resolution, please.
Second by Councilman Henry. All of the favor adopting Resolution 18 dash 0084R, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried, and this resolution is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you. You can find the consent count in Section 8 at the back of the agenda. There's a motion to approve the consent count. Move by Councilman Scott, second by Councilman Burnett. All of the favor approving the consent count, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried, this count is approved. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Mr. President, I'd like to move to extend floor privileges to my special guest.
Second by Councilman Stokes. All of the favor extending floor privileges to Hallie Atwater, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried, your guests may take the floor.
So Hallie is the Community School Coordinator at Renaissance Academy, which is a school in the 11th District, also in the 40th District. Thank you, Delegate Hayes, for being here and for your partnership with Renaissance Academy. It's a community school. It's run, the community school program is run out of the University of Maryland Baltimore School of Social Work, the Promise Heights Program. They do absolutely incredible work in that community. Very lucky to have them as partners there. Recently, as many of my colleagues were aware, I know Councilman Schleifer, Scott, Burnett, Bullock, we were at the National Conference for Community Schools last week, and they awarded, the Coalition for Community Schools awarded the National Community School Coordinator Award out of thousands of these coordinators in the entire country to our very own Hallie Atwater, so. So we have a resolution, the City Council of Baltimore Resolution, hereby known to all that the City Council of Baltimore offers its sincerest congratulations to Hallie J. Atwater in recognition of winning the 2018 Community School Coordinator Leadership Award for lifting up the youth of Renaissance Academy High School through the Promise Heights Program. Congratulations. The entire membership extends best wishes on this memorable occasion and directs this resolution be presented on the 7th day of May 2018. Signed by City Council President Bernard C. Jack Young, Eric Costello, and all members.
(laughter). Yay.
Okay. We'll now move the bills on second reader.
District 1.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
Thank you, Mr. President. The committee had a hearing on May 2, 2018. I moved the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilman Cohen. All of the favor confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The nomination is confirmed.
EA 18 dash 0144, Nadine M. Finnegan Carr, Member Community Relations Commission, District 14.
Chair recognizes.
I moved the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All of the favor confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The nomination is confirmed.
EA 18 dash 0145, Samuel A. Polikoff, Member Board of Licenses for Towing Services, District 14.
Chair recognizes Councilman Stokes.
I moved the nomination favorable.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All of the favor confirming this nominee, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The nomination is confirmed. Land Use and Transportation Committee.
City Council Bill 17 dash 0091, Zoning Conditional Use Parking Lot, 1904 Wilmington Avenue, for the purpose of permitting subject to certain conditions, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of a parking lot on the property known as 1904 Wilmington Avenue, as outlined in writ on the accompanying plat.
Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
(laughter).
I was going to call you Vice President.
Mr. President, I move the finding of facts.
Second by Councilwoman Middleton. All of the favor approving the finding of facts, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, the finding of facts are adopted. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, the amendment's on my colleague's desk. I move the amendments.
Second by Vice President Middleton. All of the favor approving these amendments, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, the bill is amended. Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable.
Second by Vice President Middleton. All those in favor approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reading.
City Council Bill 17 dash 0093, Zoning Appeals to Zoning Board Corrective, for the purpose of deleting certain court-imposed statutory provisions since rendered inoperative by Chapter 596 Acts of 2017, which direct persons aggrieved by land use decisions of the Planning Commission among certain other authorized administrative officers or units to appeal those decisions to the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals rather than seeking their judicial review, conforming the new zoning code to decades of city practice and procedures that recognize the final administrative status of planning commission decisions and providing for a special effective date.
Chair recognizes Councilman Reisinger.
Mr. President, I move the bill favorable.
Second by Council Vice President Middleton. All of the favor approving this bill, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The motion is approved, this bill moves to third reading. Third reading for final passes.
City Council Bill 18 dash 0179, Residential Lease Requirements Require Disclosures, for the purpose of requiring that certain disclosures be made to tenants signing residential leases, clarifying and conforming related provisions, setting a special effective date, and generally relating to the regulation of residential landlords. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved.
City Council Bill 18 dash 019, For a Zoning Conditional Use Parking Lot, 347 through 357 North Calvert Street and 352 and 360 Davis Street. For the purpose of permitting subject to certain conditions, the establishment, maintenance, and operation of a parking lot on the properties known as 347 through 357 North Calvert Street and 352 and 360 Davis Street, as outlined in writ on the accompanying plat. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved. Due to an early legislative bill that was on second reader at the last meeting and should have been on the third reading at this meeting, is not on the printed agenda before the council. With our objection, this bill, this bill 18 dash 0186, Charles Village Community Benefits District Management Authority will be read into the record, and the council will vote on it.
City Council Bill 18 dash 0186, Charles Village Community Benefits District and Management Authority, for the purpose of renewing and continuing the Charles Village Community Benefits District and Management Authority, providing for a special effective date and generally relating to the activities and authority of the Charles Village Community Benefits District and Management Authority. President Young, Cohen, Scott, Dorsey, Henry, Schleifer, Middleton, Pinkett, Burnett, Bullock, Reisinger, Costello, Stokes, Snead, Clark.
This bill is approved. Committee announcements. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I rise to announce a change in time of a hearing scheduled for tomorrow, May 8. City Council, the hearing for City Council Resolution 18 dash 0070R, Concerning Crisis Preparedness in Public Schools, originally scheduled for 4, will be now held at 2:30 in the council chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more committee announcements? Committee, Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, May 16, at 4:45 PM on Bill Number 18 dash 0200, City Property Renaming Radke Park to Ralph Sears Fields at Radke Park at the request of Councilman Scott. Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hold a hearing on Wednesday, June 13, at 5:00 PM on Bill 18 dash 0223. This is the Equity Assessment Program at the request of Councilman Scott. This will be televised on Charmed TV, Channel 25. Judiciary and Legislative Investigations Committee will hold a hearing on Bill 18 dash 0196, tomorrow, Tuesday, May 8, at 9:59 AM. This is environmental citations, default penalty at the request of the administration. Mr. President, I'd like to move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. All of the favor of suspending rules, announce a hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. Budget and Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on Thursday, May 17, at 5:00 PM on Bill 18 dash 0234, Annual Property Tax for Fiscal Year 2019. Please note that Baltimore City's constant yield tax rate was in fact advertised in the Baltimore Sun newspaper on Saturday, May 5, 2018. This hearing is also referred to as Taxpayers Night. We will have a brief presentation from the Budget Director from BBMR, as well as city schools, and then we will spend our evening listening to citizens' concerns and feedbacks about the proposed budget. Mr. President, I move to suspend rules 10-2 and 10-3 to announce a hearing.
Councilwoman Clark, all those in favor of suspending rules, announce a hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion is carried, Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Budget and Appropriations Committee will hold a hearing on May 17 that will be at 2:00 PM. That will be an overview of the fiscal year 2019 budget, which is Bill 18 dash 0233, the Ordinance of Estimates for Fiscal Year Ending June 30, 2019. In addition, Budget and Appropriations Committee will hold hearings on May 29, May 30, May 31, and June 1, from 9:00 AM until 9:30 PM on all four days. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any more committee announcements? Regular announcements. I'm going to ask everyone to try to keep their regular announcement to a minimum. We have to be over at the school by 6:00, so I'm going to let people have it, but please be mindful of the time. Chair recognizes Councilman Scott.
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise to ask that Council Vice President Middleton, on a moment of silence, for the 98 victims of homicide in Baltimore this year thus far and their families, and also all of those that we lost to the opioid crisis, but then also, for a more happier note, tomorrow at 4:00 PM at Johns Hopkins University, will be the City High School's baseball championship. It'd be a long story rivalry between Poly and City, so if you can make it out tomorrow where it's free, come out and see the young people play baseball.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Dorsey.
Thank you, Mr. Council President. I just want to acknowledge that my grandmother just turned 100 years old and has lived her entire life in Baltimore City.[1715.83][1715.83](applause). And that we were, I gave a resolution of recognition from myself, the council president, and all of us, as well as one from the mayor's office, at this birthday party over the weekend. That's all.
Okay. Congratulations, Grandma.[1735.54][1735.54](laughter). Any other, Chair recognizes Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to extend the invitation to my colleagues and everyone in the room. May 19, I'm having a Community Resource Fair at Emmons and Westside High School from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. We'll have a wide array of city agencies and nonprofit organizations, community-based organizations there to help and lend support to anyone who needs it, so I'll see you guys there. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Chair recognizes Councilman Costello.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll be having a reception after this hearing in the REEZ Room in honor of Hallie's accomplishment, and I'd like to invite all of my colleagues to join. Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Vice President Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I just want to do a shout-out to the Park Heights Saints, which has their annual celebration at the Forum, and they also did a step forward and bought a house in Park Heights, so their... forward and bought a house in Park Heights, so their, um, continual service and development for the youth in this city, particularly in Park Heights, is, is moving along. Uh, the next meeting of the City Council will be held on Monday, May 14th, 2018, and, uh, we would like a moment of silence for, uh, Beth Stroman. She, um, passed away. She, um, I knew Beth from serving on the Sustainability Commission, and she worked for many years in charge of the Sustainability Office to, so, to the family of, uh, Beth Stroman, and also for Ray Antoine Glasgow III, and also a moment of silence to the continual deaths of the opioid epidemic in this city, and now the number 98, uh, deaths of homicides.
There have been no further business. Conclude the 34th meeting of the 72nd term of the Baltimore City Council. Good night.